Good evening. We'll start tonight off with prayer and pledge. Prayer will be led by Councilman Copeland, and the pledge will be led by Councilman Ostache, for those who would like to participate.
If you'd like to participate, you can bow at this time. Gracious Father, we thank you for another opportunity to come together as council and community to vote on the betterment of our great city of Saginaw. Father, we ask this evening that you give us grace, wisdom, and insight as we go throughout the agenda, the appointments, oh God, we ask that your grace will be upon us, that your peace will be with us, and that in all that we do, we do it in understanding and wisdom for the betterment of our great community. Thank you for our public servants that serve our community, and thank you for our residents that continue to support the work that we have done. We ask, oh God, that you continue to cover us during this holiday season, keep us from any incidents or accidents. Thank you for life this evening, and Father, we give you all the glory, honor, and praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia is absent. Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Balls?
Present.
Mayor Protam Bench?
Present.
Councilmember Ostache?
Present.
Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember Flores is absent. Councilmember Copeland?
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
You have seven present and two absent.
Thank you. This is a public meeting of the Saginaw City Council. Audience, we ask that you remain from clapping, booing, any obnoxious behavior. All council people, please put your phones on vibrate. Audience, if you could do as well, I sure would appreciate it. Madam Clerk.
I have a few announcements. The city offices will be closed December 25th and 26th in observance of the Christmas holiday, and also January 1st and 2nd for the New Year holiday. City Council will conduct its strategic planning session during the next regular meeting on January 12th, 2024, and the meeting will begin 9:00 a.m. here in council chambers. And councilmembers, two council communications have been revised and a copy placed at your seat. Consent agenda item number five has been revised with a new amount in the manager's recommendation, and the funding language was updated in item number 11. And lastly, the city has hired two new police officers, and Chief Ruth will come forward to introduce them.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Protam, council. I'd like to introduce to you our two newest police officers. They attended the Delta College Police Academy starting in August, and they just graduated on Friday of last week. Shay Lahini, would you please step forward? Cameron Hawkins, would you please step forward? Clerk, if you could administer the oath.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Michigan, and I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of police officer for the city of Saginaw according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, and if you would step over and sign the oath book here, right above where I printed your name. Oh, sorry.
Okay, now we'll have the pinning of the badges. Shay Lahini, would your brother, Ryan Lahini, please step forward? Can pin the badge on?
Don't stick her, brother.
We had a little rehearsal earlier, so hopefully it doesn't happen.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. That was so tempting.
Okay, thank you very much. Cameron Hawkins has his uncle, Mike Chesney here. Would you please step forward and pin on the badge? All right, thank you very much. Congratulations, our newest police officers.
Always to see a female in the crowd.
Yes, you're welcome. Thanks for your service.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
It's just like being in the military. Okay.
You're not public input.
But this is public input time. Be clearly and remain courteous and respectful when you approach the stadium, the staff, and with the community, with your concerns. Please be clearly, no, again, no obnoxious behavior, booing, or clapping. Clapping, the clerk will call you up. You have three minutes. Please, within those three minutes, I'll give you a few seconds to wrap up after, but I need you to wrap up what you need to say in the time allotted, please. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Kimberly Cage.
Hello, good afternoon, council and everyone. All right, so I come before you today to speak about the alarm permit ordinance. On June 17th of this year, my home alarm went off when me and my daughter wasn't at home, and the cops, the alarm company called to ask if we wanted the police to be dispatched. And I said yes because I didn't know what kind of circumstance it may have been. And so they came out, thank God, everything was okay. But a few months later, I got a bill in the mail stating that there was a $50 yearly permit to have an alarm. And what also got me with this alarm permit ordinance was the representative I spoke to over the phone, they told me if there was an emergency, if I didn't pay this $50, the police would not be dispatched. So my call would go unheard, which I was not happy to hear that. So I'm just before you to request if it can be revised, because I know for myself, many other people have alarms here in Saginaw, and out of everyone I know, no one else has heard or even gotten anything like this in the mail. And then I don't think it's fair as a resident, you know, I pay for, you know, my property taxes, I pay for, you know, tours to police and 911 and everything, and to be told that if there was an emergency, that police would not be dispatched, I was, of course, not happy again. So I'm before you once again to ask if something could be done about this alarm ordinance. That's it.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
You're welcome.
The Department, the Department should be getting with you so that we can begin to try to help solve some of this.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Diane Keenan.
Hello, Mayor Moore, city council members and concerned citizens. My name is Diane Keenan, and I reside at 4650 Hemmerter Court, Saginaw. I am the executive director of the Eastside Soup Kitchen located at 940 East Genesee Avenue, Saginaw 48607. I am here tonight to share some metrics with you and demonstrate the need for the hunger solution building expansion. In 2022, we served 160,000 meals. We serve nearly 21,000 meals and/or snacks to after-school youth programs. These include First Ward Community Center, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Houghton Jones Center. We have 2,200 documented volunteers that served a total of 39,000 hours of service. The needs for our expansion include our area kitchen, our food handling and distribution area, our cold and dry storage areas. We need to create an educational kitchen area, a wellness center, donation distribution area, and we need to develop an enclosed drive-through area for mobile meal services. We need a safe area to distribute 20,000 pounds of food for our drive-through system, and we need a semi-loading dock. We also need to upgrade our electrical systems in addition to our mechanical area. In 2003, we served 50,000 meals. Our 2022 numbers brings us to an increase of 220%. The 2023 numbers will surpass those numbers. We average 750 meals a day, Monday through Friday. We serve the working poor, the homeless, veterans, single parents, those who suffer from mental health challenges and/or substance abuse disorders, and the elderly, which the elderly number is increasing. As we all know, food insecurity is real. I hope you will support our efforts to provide meals and hope in the heart of Saginaw. I ask that you please consider the Hunger Solutions Center when and if ARPA funds are available. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Samantha McKenzie.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to speak. My name is Samantha McKenzie, and I'm honored to serve as the president and CEO of Hidden Harvest. We are also located at 940 East Genesee in the same building as the Eastside Soup Kitchen. The Hunger Solutions Center expansion project is so important to our community because we've seen so much more of a demand for food from each of our partnering agencies as an ongoing impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. In many ways, we've reached our capacity in the current building. We have to turn down food donations regularly because we don't have enough freezer space. We have to give food away to outlying areas if we can't fit it in our freezer currently. And we have food donors that would like to give us whole semi-loads of food but don't feel comfortable unloading on an active street instead of a loading dock. This is all important because we support the safety net of our community, and the safety net is letting us know that they need more food. Hidden Harvest annually partners with around 70 programs in the city of Saginaw. These include our local shelters, food pantries, soup kitchens, youth, and senior programs. The food we rescue and distribute free of charge has a significant value and also has a significant impact across each of these agencies. In the last year alone, we saved our partnering city of Saginaw agencies $3.5 million. What that means is that Underground Railroad has $20,000 more dollars in their budget to advocate for their survivors of domestic violence. The $105,000 worth of food that we shared to the rescue mission makes it possible for them to direct their donated dollars towards getting people back on their feet and finding them long-term housing. For Mid-Michigan Teen Challenge and Odyssey House, this food means that they have more capacity to work on substance abuse recovery programs. For Can Council, the $15,000 worth of food shared with them means that more families are willing to participate in parenting classes. And obviously, for Eastside Soup Kitchen, with our food, they're able to meet that increased demand they've seen for a hot nutritious meal. Our food does so much more than feed people, but food insecurity is the key reason Hidden Harvest and the Eastside Soup Kitchen made the initial ARPA proposal request and why we are here now to ask you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Jim Dwyer.
My name is Jim Dwyer. Our sincere thanks to you, the members of the city council, allowing me to share our Hunger Solutions Center story tonight. Within two weeks retiring from Saginaw Valley State University, having been employed there for 42 years, little did I know God would point me to the Eastside Soup Kitchen where I became a lead volunteer and now to chair a capital campaign for the expansion of the Hunger Solutions Center. Boy, I have learned so much about the Great Lakes region, which includes the city of Saginaw and the people faced with true food insecurity. Today, I'm here to explain why the Hunger Solutions Center, which houses Hidden Harvest and the Eastside Soup Kitchen, is in dire need to increase the physical space. Do you know that 25% of the Saginaw County households meet the requirements of ALICE, asset limited, income constrained, employed? While 21% of the households are in poverty level, ALICE households include individuals and families who work but are unable to meet their basic needs. Combined with poverty level households, 46%, I want to reiterate, 46% of the Saginaw County residents are food insecure. In the city of Saginaw, the Hidden Harvest and the Eastside Soup Kitchen, which I'm going to reiterate, are working together to alleviate the food insecurity in your community. In 2022, as Sam said, the Food Rescue and Restitution Hidden Harvest delivered 1,175,000 pounds, with an estimated meals served at 55,000, and as she said, a savings that benefited those agents at 3.5 million. I worked the Eastside Soup Kitchen. I'm one of those people that helped prepare those 700 meals. And ponder, we did 160,000 meals last year. We did, again, 21,000 meals for our area youth and city programs. While these diets stats are eye-opening, the needs of our citizens are ever-increasing. Please take time to review the executive summary of the Hunger Solution Expansion Project we have provided to you tonight. In addition, we have included the astonishing metrics as to service providing to the city of Saginaw this past year. What does this all mean to you and me? Having provided the same services for 18 years and with decreasing demands of the people of Saginaw City, we need to double our facilities, improve efficiency in food distribution and storage capacity, all with safety for patrons and volunteers at the forefront. To support our efforts, bearing in mind our proven track record, proven track record and sustainability, we're asking for reconsideration to receive ARPA funds for the continuation and the expansion of the service in the community for many years to come. And these are really special and talented people that make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here we are at council remarks.
Council Parsons, you have three minutes as well. We will begin tonight with Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. And Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year, since we won't be seeing you until next year. Real quick, I just want to give a shout out to Councilwoman Garcia for doing a Christmas with angels shopping spree a couple days ago. Please, if you are able to give to that organization, contact their lead organizer. And then also, the only thing that I have right now is if anybody has any information on Keyshawn Banks, Kwan Lee, Quay Smithers, Mario Bulger, Pamela Whitson, Ryan Clements, Roy Woodson, Cortez Hampton, Mazzy Reddison, or Jonathan Lamar Van, please call 1-800-422-5245 if you have any help that could be given to solve their murders. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening. Thank you to our public speakers who've shared this evening. Thank you to those who are watching online. Really great to hear about the Hunger Solutions Center expansion, meeting with Mr. Dwyer. He's such a spirited man. So it was a great conversation. Thank you for sharing this evening. I would also like to say congratulations to our newly sworn officers. I pray God's divine protection over you as you serve our great community. Thank you for serving our community. Also, congratulations to the graduates, the fall graduates of Saginaw Valley State University. I was extremely happy to hear the amount of students that were staying in the community, staying in Saginaw after graduation, which means that we are doing some great things in our community where we are keeping young people in the city and in Saginaw County. So it was great to hear those things. And finally, I do want to say thank you to the city of Saginaw for those who've contacted me, my colleagues. I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, the way you all checked in on me, texts, calls, all of that. I greatly appreciate you, and to the community who checked in on my family and the loss of my grandfather. 102 years in this great earth is a blessing, and so it was an honor to celebrate his life. So that is why I was absent on last Monday. It was my grandfather's celebration of life, and what a celebration it was to remember the great things that he loved about the city of Saginaw, the impact he made in our city, but most of all, the love he had for one another. And so as we enter into this holiday season, I would encourage all of you, for some, it will be a challenging holiday this year, but take some time just to hug someone, to love someone, to let them know that you care. Maybe it's someone you haven't talked to in five days. Call them and let them know you're thinking about them, because you never know. My grandfather, we were celebrating Thanksgiving, and the next day he was gone. So you never know when you're going to lose that loved one, and make sure that you share that time to let them know that you love them and you care for them. So Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Holidays to the residents of the city of Saginaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I would like to say thank you to our public speakers for coming out. I believe there is an event at the Soup Kitchen on Wednesday. I plan on being there, so looking forward to that. I would like to say congratulations to our two new officers. I would also like to tell you that you are working for one of the best police departments in this area, and probably from here to Flint. All right, I retired, I was in your shoes, do the same thing. I was also back for a promotion to sergeant, but this, the opportunity that you have to learn, and to learn with the staff at the Saginaw City Police Department under Chief Ruth, is going to be an experience that you will value for the rest of your life. There are so many people that have retired, have gone on to bigger and better things or other things, but took their experience from Saginaw and done great things with it. You're going to have the opportunity, more than likely, in the next two years to experience everything you can in law enforcement, because our city is a busy city. It's a busy city, but it's a great city. It's a great city, filled with great people. So congratulations, and I hope that you guys don't stay for the whole meeting and you get a chance to go out and celebrate. Because when I was sitting there at that time, I didn't want to be sitting there at that time. I wanted to go. So, but again, congratulations and Happy Holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Balls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, I would like to let everybody know what I did this weekend. I had the opportunity to go to Battle Creek, Michigan to see my neighbor graduate from the Michigan Youth Challenge Academy. He was there for five and a half months, and while he was there, he became the commander of the whole troops of all the guys down there, and he did the commencement speech. My neighbor had some challenges, coming from a single-parent home, so I had the opportunity to do some mentoring with him. He would help me work in the yard and cut grass and help me with my pond and things of that nature. And he had some issues he had to go through with school and stuff like that, and I kept asking him, maybe he needed to go to the Michigan Youth Challenge Academy. And after a year, he finally went. And I'm so proud that Mr. Amarian Rowe is sitting right here in the front row. He will be here with us for at least another two weeks before he go to the second phase of the challenge, where he's going to go to try to get into skilled trades. And if you guys believe it or not, he's going to be a pipe fitter like his neighbor. So, but he's going to put a welding on his, too. So I just want to thank him and let the city council know and everybody else know in the audience that just talking to our youth and spending a lot of time with them can help improve them. If you can just touch their heart, eventually get to their head. And I think it has with him, and I'm so happy, you know, that he has took the challenge, because our youth are challenged every day. Every day in school and in neighborhoods, they are challenged. Association brings about assimilation. If you've got a lot of kids at school that's not doing that well, or other kids that's involved in gangs that may happen to come from single-parent homes, and everybody knows how many single-parent homes that we have in the city of Saginaw, and it's hard for the mother to raise the kids by themselves. So sometimes we just need to do a little pushing as mentors and neighbors, and maybe we can help our kids out there, just push them a little bit to get them to go on the right path. And, you know, I employ everybody here. It's my passion to do it, and I think God wants all of us to get involved with our neighbors. I mean, we doing it in some form or fashion every day when we go to work, when we dealing with people on an everyday basis to help improve their lives. So I'm so happy that Amarian Rowe has continuous education. He went, he was a couple of credits short from his grade, but by that academy, they got an accelerated course where he can go to regular school and go to school, and he got all his credits, and now he's a 17-year-old graduate already. So he didn't pick up another year, so he's been catapulted into a new atmosphere to be a productive member of society. And I just want to say thank you, Amarian, for taking the challenge of being a young, productive adult in the city of Saginaw. Thank you so much.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's worthy. Next, we have Councilman Ostache.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to everybody in the chamber tonight and everybody watching from home. It's good to be back. I will say the last time I tested positive for COVID, so I was in isolation. So unfortunately, I had to miss the meeting, but it's good to be back in the chamber. Again, like Councilman Copeland said, Merry Christmas to everybody. This is our last meeting before the end of the year. Happy Hanukkah and Happy Kwanzaa to everybody that will be celebrating soon. Also, two condolences to Councilman Copeland and also Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia, who lost her mother. I know what it's like to lose a grandparent and also a parent. Also, congratulations to our new sworn officers. It was nice to talk to you before the meeting tonight, get to know you a little bit better, and your family members that are here, so it's an exciting time. Like Councilman Reggie said, Reggie Williams said, it's really interesting. I've ridden once, I'm not going to experience everything that you did, but congratulations and thank you for your service to our city. For our public speakers that were here tonight, the city staff will get back with you, and we'll get a report on that as well. So I will go back and reread that ordinance myself after I made some notes here, to go back and take a look at that. Just an announcement, the city website and our Facebook page has been advertising that we are hiring. So in our Streets Division, firefighters, engineering, was just a few items that I saw posted. So if you're looking for any information on that, visit our website, of course, get ahold of our HR department. I also saw in the news there is some new housing coming to Old Town, so that was kind of exciting. There's a lot going on in Saginaw. Our council packet agenda is packed with a lot of that information tonight and some of the things that are coming, but over in Adams on the river, there's going to be another renovation that'll start next year, 52 apartments with 4,600 square feet of retail and stuff on the first floor. So that's good news for the city. I'm excited to see that. A fun event is coming again. I'm going to bring it up today, February 17th. Mark your calendars, it's going to be the Out House Races again down at Hoyt Park. So if you're interested in getting your outhouse ready to race down the hill, we're going to have to get some snow first, so we'll have to pray for that. We'll put them on wheels, but that is coming again. So thanks to the downtown positive results that is putting that on again. And if anybody's interested, Brian Lucco can be contacted at 989-274-7215. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Flores.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Saginaw.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Garcia, please.
I'll let it slide. It's the holidays. All right. Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Just want to say thank you for all our presenters and Eastside Soup Kitchen, they always do a great job. I'm a regular volunteer there myself and know the great work they do, and by them having that outdoor drive-through service, I mean, it would probably be more packed inside if they didn't offer that, and that was a great asset that they did to the Eastside Soup Kitchen. So I'm a big supporter of them, and I will be down there Wednesday to be down there volunteering again for the holiday. It's always good to give back. You never know when you're going to be put in that situation, and I've been there before myself, so I know the meaning of helping others. I actually volunteered five days out of seven last week, so I was a busy woman, but I always tried to make time. but I always try to make time to give back to my community because if we're not out there in the community, what are we doing besides just sitting here? We have to show our citizens that we really care about our community and what we do. So I still got a couple of years to be reelected, but just putting it out there. Keep me on your agenda. Um, wanna say, uh, Christmas with Angels, shout out for Elvis Maco. He did a really great job. Christmas with Angels, we served over thirty families at the Dow, was great. Jimmy Green, thank you for the Spirit tickets for the families that were able to go and see a game that evening. Also to my colleague Bill, he came down there and put me to shame with his wrapping, but I'm glad he came and, cause made mine look a little bit decent. So we had a good time, um, him coming out and I know he was a big supporter last year with a couple of other Councilmen Flores and I believe Monique, she went down there too last year. Um, tomorrow, the Saginaw Valley, they're having a free holiday hoops for the Cardinals. They're playing the Hillsdale Chargers that won its free admission and they are gonna be giving out toys, um, gifts, so it's limited. So first come, first served. They're gonna have a DJ, live entertainment. So, um, I know a lot of the kids are in school till Wednesday, but if you have grandkids or that, make it out there. It'd be a good time. It's the first time that we're actually gonna try that out and see how it goes. So if you know anybody, and like I said, I always put the community alerts on my page as well. Um, also to the new police officers, congratulations. I pray for your safety. If my address comes up, just, I probably have it under control if my neighbors call on me. Yeah, so just wanted to say, everybody have a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Feliz Ano Nuevo, which is Happy New Year's, and Feliz Navidad, um, bilingual a little bit up here. So just wanted to say, thank you guys for all coming. Last time, we didn't have anybody, so it's great to see a full house kinda today compared to nobody at all. So thank you, God bless, have a good night and everybody be safe.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tim Bitch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening to everybody. Um, I too would like to wish everybody a happy holiday and a happy new year. Um, and that everybody has a good time and is safe. Um, I wanted to thank our, uh, public speakers, um, the ladies from the Soup Kitchen and Hidden Harvest. Um, you do wonderful things and I know like my church has done Second Saturday Breakfast and it's always this remarkable feeling, positive feeling that you've been able to feed so many people. But on the flip side, there are so many people who need to be fed and then there are so many people who don't know about those resources. So just really wanna thank you guys for being here and your continued advocacy for the people that you serve. Uh, cause I know myself as a council member, when people come to me frequently, you guys are agencies that I refer people to when they come looking to have their needs met. Um, so just thank you very much, um, for coming tonight. And, uh, congratulations to Mr. Rowe. Um, I hope I said that right. But, um, what a wonderful job that you've done and, um, you should be so proud of yourself. And I really wish you the best in your future endeavors. So come back and, you know, update us sometime or make sure you tell Councilman Balls how things are going so he can let us know how things are going for you. Um, it's a wonderful program that I'm just now hearing about, so wonderful. Um, and good luck to you. And, uh, to our officers, congratulations. You, uh, as others have said, you are coming into a city that is filled with a lot of, um, wonderful people and never a dull moment. I know I've done ride-alongs like others have and it's always eye-opening to see what you guys go through and you deal with, but you couldn't have a better police chief or a better department to have your first experience with. So welcome and, and take care of yourselves and thank you for what you're doing. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Last but not least, thank you all for coming. I want everybody, if you can, to keep in mind what the season is really all about. Jesus is the reason for this. For all of this stuff that we do, it never adds up if we don't put him first. I could give you a list of stuff that I did all week, trust me. I've been on the move, I've been on the move. For those that know me, it is our Christmas giveaway. I currently have eight hundred and seventy-five children in the city of Saginaw that me and some community people, Shelton Matthews, Charlie from Charlie Platinum Wireless and other people, we will be servicing children for Christmas. No child should wake up to a present, to not have a present. So that's our goal. Um, Angel Tree, all that they can't do, we pick it up. If they let us know, we pick it up. It is really, it's really important that I think that we all just remember. Council Copeland has the right idea. I said it in my very first speech to the public. What the world needs now is love, sweet love. We need to go back to basics. We need to go back to helping on each other, checking on each other. I've got a young man who probably thought he couldn't do it and now you done it. I've got two new police officers who are just excited. Brother, I'm so thankful you didn't stick her. Um, it, you know what? It's good to laugh. It's just good to laugh and it's good to see the community laughing together, not separate. I, you know what? I can say so much about the city, but y'all all know where I'm at. It's a new season, it's a new day. The anointing is on our city right now. We all need to walk into the glory of what is getting ready to happen to our city. Our city is getting ready to be taken over by us. And we are gonna make this the best place we possibly can. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
That takes us to reports from the manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And first, I would say congratulations to our new officers as well. And also, if you would like to leave, you and your families can, can leave the meeting.
Thank you. I tell y'all, he know how to clear room, don't he? Every time it's time for the manager, he can clear this room out.
Well, I was, I was the most considerate one.
He's their hero now.
See, they, they might have been gonna sit here and want to hear your report.
I doubt that.
I don't think they wanted to hear any other reports. And also, do congratulations to Mr. Rowe. That's awesome program that, uh, and good to have Councilman Balls working with the youth. That's, I hadn't heard of that program either, but if you look it up, it's a great program. And if you're being trained in welding and, uh, pipe fitting, you're gonna get a job. You'll, you'll be sought out, so congratulations to you. And, uh, on what, um, Councilman Ostash said, I did, uh, mention this on the radio as well for our year-end wrap-up, but our staffing levels have recovered pretty significantly since the pandemic. At one time, we had over fifty open positions in the city and now we're, we have twelve full-time positions open. They're all listed on the, uh, city's website. If you go to the I Want To tab and type in job opportunities, you'll see them there. Uh, firefighter positions will be tested. So if you know anybody who's local and is interested in that, tell them to sign up, uh, to take the firefighter test. The, there are, there's a posting for certified officers and non-certified and then public services are all listed right now. As the clerk mentioned, the strategic planning session is January twelfth and we start at nine AM. Uh, the agenda currently includes the food study, food and security update, the ARPA update, the ARPA funding discussion and economic development updates from the city staff, SEDC, Saginaw Future and also master plan update. And we have two presentations this evening. And the first one is on the audit. So, um, just kind of going back a number of years, uh, that at one point in the mid, probably two thousand six, five, seven, that, we did not complete our audits on time. There were more than six months past due back then. And I did find a letter from the state, from one of those audits that said we were not even able to issue bonds because of, uh, without state permission. They, uh, the controller's office did not have bank reconciliations done when it was time for the audit. Um, I think they were six months behind on those at the time. We pay, we ended up probably paying thirty percent more for audit fees because the auditors had to do adjustments for us. So we cleaned all of that up at the time, two thousand eight, nine, but we still had financial issues. So in twenty thirteen, uh, the audit showed that we had a fund balance of two, about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So to put that in perspective, and I remember our auditor at the time, uh, putting it this way, we could operate for three days in a financial emergency. It costs about ninety thousand dollars a day to run the city. So that's all we had. So ten years later, uh, we're in a lot better place. So our audits are done on time. I think this, this year was very smooth, um, with getting all of our books ready to be audited and, um, less audit, auditor time onsite. And we also have a really, uh, healthy fund balance. And so it's great work by our city staff. It's been a long process and also, uh, thanks to our auditors for, uh, getting everything completed in timely fashion as well. And, uh, we do have Jamie Rivette here this evening. She's a CPA and a principal with Yo and Yo, CPAs and business consultants. Jamie?
Well, good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight.
Hello.
I have the Cliffs Notes version for you. So, uh, we do spend a few weeks onsite doing the audit. Um, and I do just wanna point out that there are printed copies in the city manager's office if you so want a copy of those. Um, so tonight, I'm gonna go over the highlights and this is from the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three audit. So just wanna start off really, um, of why I'm here. So every municipality in the state of Michigan is required to have an annual audit done. And an audit can only be issued by an independent licensed CPA firm. And it really is management's responsibility for the preparation and fair presentation of those financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's really the rules we have to follow, um, when performing the audit. Um, the auditor's responsibility then is to come in and we audit that information presented. So we are onsite for two to three weeks. Um, and then we express opinions on those financial statements based on the audit. And the city was issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance offered and it means there's no material modifications that need to be made to those financial statements. I also wanna point out that the city did receive an award for their financial reporting excellence from the Government Finance Officers Association from your audit that was submitted last year. Um, and this is a very high achievement. I just wanted to congratulate you on that award. So my next couple of slides is regarding your operating fund, which is your general fund. So I have a picture here, I just think pie charts, a little easier to see where your revenue is coming from instead of trying to follow some numbers across on the page. So here you can see that you do receive about thirty-seven percent of your general fund revenue is coming from city income taxes, which comes up to about fifteen point seven million. Um, and then we also have property taxes, that's about ten percent of your total general fund revenue. We did see a slight increase here over last year, um, about three hundred and four thousand. And then the gray section here is your intergovernmental revenue. So the majority of that, about nine point one million, is coming directly from the state and the state shared revenue dollars. So your total general fund revenue was about forty-two million for the year. The next slide then is just really comparing that from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-three and just wanted to focus on the change really from twenty-two to twenty-three. We did have an increase in revenue, about one point six million, um, compared to last year. And really, the majority of that was related to the interest income, um, received compared to last year. So we did see favorable markets this year, so we saw an increase in interest income. And this next slide then is your general fund again, but now we're looking at the expenditures. So all the funds going out of the city. Um, and really, the largest section here is your public safety, which is about fifty-nine percent. So you can think of it as every dollar going out of the city from your general fund, fifty-nine cents of that is related to public safety. So that's broken down into fire and police and fire makes up about nine point four million of that total twenty-four million. And then police is the remainder of about fourteen point nine million. That was up slightly over last year, about a two percent increase. Again, I have another slide showing the expenditures and the change here. So we did see an increase in the general fund expenditures, about two point four million. Um, and this really broken down into three main reasons for that. One is there was an increase in the police department. As, as the city manager pointed out, um, you filled almost all of your vacant positions there compared to last year. So we did see an increase there. Um, and then there was some increases in pension, um, and some raises and some new pay, uh, tables for police department as well. We also saw an increase in your community and economic development this year. So there was some increases in demolitions that were done during the year. And then an increase, um, related to the furnace project, um, that happened during the last fiscal year. A lot of that was offset with some consumer energy money as well as some ARPA funds. Now, my next two slides are looking at your sewer fund and your water fund and those are what we call enterprise funds. So they're run more like a business, so they have charges for services. And, um, we compare the inflows to outflows here for your sewer fund and you can see your inflows exceeded your outflows about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. And the inflows are your user charges, um, that the city collects for services as well as some investing activities and capital contributions. And then the operating expenses, those are all the salaries and benefits related to that as well as capital and related costs. So purchases of, um, capital assets and then payments on your long-term debt. Um, the water fund is a similar type of fund to another enterprise fund. Um, and I did go back and look because of that significant increase in twenty twenty-one and that was the year that you had some water revenue refunding bonds of about twenty-one point seven million. So that was the reason for the spike in the revenue there. But they were pretty flat, um, your revenue, your cash inflows and your cash outflows compared to last year. Um, we did have the cash outflows in your water fund did exceed the inflows, about seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Um, then I also have a slide in here looking at your OPEB and your retiree healthcare contributions. Um, so those are on the bottom there. So for retiree healthcare, um, the contribution was almost seven million dollars and then pension was about twenty point two million. And those are, um, what's required to be, um, reported on here. And you do have an actuary that calculates those, those figures, um, each year. So we do have, your pension is about forty-three percent funded and OPEB is about three percent funded. Um, and in addition to doing an audit of the financial information, we're also required, the audit standards require us to gain an understanding of your internal controls. So, um, we do look through your key transaction cycles and are happy to report we did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that were noted, um, during our audit. Um, we're also required to do a compliance audit or single audit because the city does receive and spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal dollars. Um, and so we did audit the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds this year, um, which is about two point nine million in ARPA expenditures, um, which covered about forty-seven percent of your total, uh, federal expenditures that you had to. Um, again, this is coming from the federal government as to the guidelines of what we have to test. Um, and you did not have any findings this year that we needed to report. Um, and as the, um, city manager mentioned too, we did have a very clean audit this year. I looked back, we only had, uh, proposed three adjusting entries. And just to put it into context, there's over a hundred entries that are posted just to prepare your books for us to come in and audit at year-end. Um, last year, there were about eleven entries and the year before that, there were twenty adjusting entries. So a significant improvement over last year. Um, and I do just want to thank Tim, Yolanda, Lori and their teams for all their hard work and professionalism. Um, they definitely put the audit as a priority and it really helps my team and I come in and be able to do our job when everything is prepared and ready for us to audit. Are there any questions that I could answer?
Do we have any questions? Yes, Bill.
Uh, thanks for the presentation, really good and lots of detail. Um, going back to slide two, you were talking about the general fund revenues and you mentioned the property taxes.
Mm-hmm.
You kinda mentioned it was, uh, what was the figure, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen percent?
It's ten percent of your total general fund revenue.
Okay, yeah, cause I thought, I thought you had meant, I thought you mentioned the two that were combined together, which would be the combining of the public safety millage and, cause sometimes we reference it that way. And that's what I heard, without, you know, going back in the, in the tape, but I thought you said something about fourteen some millions. I just wanted to clarify for the public that's watching.
Did I say the expenditures? Okay, yeah. So here, I can go back. Yep, so the public safety expenditures, um, the total of that is twenty-four million.
Yep.
And that is combined fire and police into one.
Okay, good.
Any other questions?
I have one more. Just one more.
Yes.
Just one more. Uh, you were talking about pensions and I was interesting to see the graphs that were there too. Recently, this- Recently, the state of Michigan has funded pensions to sixty percent. Have we not seen that yet, or is that coming?
It's coming.
Coming?
Yeah, it wouldn't be in this audit.
Okay.
You don't have it yet.
We don't have it yet. Okay.
I'm not sure if we had a subsequent event footnote in there for it or not, but.
That's fine.
Yep. It came after June thirtieth.
Okay, that's what I was kind of thinking.
I think the state transferred that money directly to MERS.
Okay.
To MERS.
Okay, so that's not going to be here then?
Right.
It'll just affect the net pension liability number that is reported.
I apologize to you. Mr. Manager, I apologize. So we've talked about that before. I just forgot. Thank you.
Do we have any more questions? Yes, Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor.
Michael.
Thank you. So for slide two again, for the other financing sources, for the hundred twenty-three thousand, where'd that come from?
That is transfers in. So those are just funds within the city that go from one fund to another. So it's, off the top of my head, I don't really know exactly what it's for or where it came from, but it is just from another fund within the city.
Could you give an example of that?
Is it CDBG? Okay. So CDBG had probably had some expenditures paid for in the general fund, then so CDBG would transfer that revenue over to the general fund.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Go back and look.
That's it.
Any other questions? Well, we'd like to thank you, Ms. Jamie. Great job, as always.
Thank you.
And our second presentation this evening, we have from Tom Miller from Saginaw Future. We have a couple items on here tonight, including the state appropriation that we received. Tom?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
His council members, manager. My name is Tom Miller. I am the executive vice president for Saginaw Future, and I'm here today to provide a pretty significant update on a project that we've been working on for a couple, if not several years, the Saginaw Medical Diamond Project. So there, you should, I think you received this copy of this presentation in your packets. Just two important points here. I won't read the whole thing. But this project represents a significant economic development project, an opportunity for the city of Saginaw. Real property improvements exceeding a hundred million dollars on the riverfront, as well as the creation of a thousand jobs in downtown Saginaw. The other one, which is equally important, and something that Central Michigan University strives to address are the inequities in healthcare and the chronic, some of the chronic health problems plaguing our county. If you look at health statistics, you know, the 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 health indicators, the county of Saginaw ranks near the bottom on a number of those key indicators, obesity, childhood obesity, infant mortality, on a number of those factors. And Central Michigan University, one of their missions is to address some of those disparities. And so that's important for this project as well. There was my, there we go. So about, I think in two thousand thirteen, we hired a nationally renowned consultant that looks at the economic benefit of higher education, Trip Umback. They they found a number of conclusions based on their, based on their study. One of the important ones is that the campus between years one and two in Mount Pleasant and years three and four in the city of Saginaw represents the highest or the farthest separation between a medical education facility in the country. And why that's important is because the changing dynamics of the way that the college of, college of medicines in general are teaching their learners. They want to have clinical experience for years one and two from the onset of medical school, so that students are integrated with the clinical setting immediately. This is probably the most important slide and something that we have been working on for a number of years. November thirtieth, you can see there at the the bottom of the date there, Central Michigan University Board of Trustees passed a pretty important resolution supporting the development of the Saginaw Medical Diamond Project and our efforts to raise two hundred million dollars to create and consolidate the College of Medicine in the in the city of Saginaw. And I'll get into a little bit more of the numbers there. There's a lot of numbers being thrown around in the presentation, and I'll try and give you a high-level breakdown. So we have been pursuing funding, both funding opportunities and then trying to ascertain costs related to securing this major economic development project. So generally speaking, and I can dive deeper into the numbers if you like during the question and answer period, but a lot of us, some of us in this room and and members of the Chamber of Commerce, our Amos O'Neill, our state representative, and Senator Rivette, were instrumental in helping the city to secure thirty point three million dollars in estate appropriations to support this project. Tim and I also worked on a three point three million dollar federal appropriations through Congressman Kilby, so thanks to him on that. And then, of course, you, city council, did commit five million dollars in ARPA funding to a behavioral health clinic, and the county committed five million dollars in their ARPA funding towards infrastructure. Earlier this year, I think in October, I submitted a ten million dollar Strategic Site Readiness Program grant that we should hear about at the end of this year, so in a couple of weeks here. And we're optimistic, but you never know how those grants come out. On the on the budget side, we engage with Consumers Energy to look at the bearing of high voltage and low voltage utility lines along the river. Those initial estimates came back at eighteen point five million dollars. We did some additional work around routes and options, and the new estimate is fifteen million dollars to bury those lines. We have been working, Phil Carwatt and I and the city manager have been working with Spicer Engineering to identify infrastructure-related costs, mostly related to sewer, road, water improvements, as well as improvements to the riverfront, including seawall installation, and identified around thirty million dollars in additional infrastructure that would be required for the project. One, one thing that we are also exploring, which I think will be nice addition if if we can make it happen, we've been working with MDOT to look at the installation of some boulevards along Washington Avenue to help calm traffic in the project area. Also there, at the the bottom of the budget there is the fifteen million dollar Behavioral Health Clinic and Public Health Department building. We know that the city has committed five million dollars of ARPA funding towards that endeavor, and then there is still work to be done on the county side to look at what the Health Department building will look like, and then will that be combined into one facility with the Behavioral Health Clinic? You could see here, this is the budget. Cassie, Yolanda, and Lori, I think, all helped to work on this from the city's aspect in in terms of meeting the requirements to report to Leo. You could see there, there's, we've been meeting every two weeks with Spicer to discuss infrastructure upgrades that are needed, and they are many. You can kind of see there the list. This is a timeline that goes through just roughly what we expect, how long this will take. We, of course, want to try and expedite this as much as possible, but each one of these infrastructure items requires quite a bit of permitting through the state. Just one example, there is a, and Phil knows this better than I, but the state found a boxhead mussel, which is an endangered species in the Saginaw River, which requires a hundred thousand dollar study to determine if that mussel is in the river and how we should be handling that, doing what sort of precautions we need to take when we're when we're installing the seawall. So a lot of permits and a lot of work, and, you know, for instance, Consumers Energy's project, they anticipate to take up to three years to complete the infrastructure related to the to the project. So the second portion, that was sort of on the funding side. This is on the cost side. When we started to look at, okay, so we know all of the infrastructure, a lot of the infrastructure requirements associated with this project. Then you sort of get into the conceptual site plan stage of the project. And we've been working with, one of the trustees from Central Michigan University has developed several hundred thousand square feet of commercial space and has a real eye for architecture and is sort of leading the charge from the Board of Trustees' perspective on this project, and had a a top-five list or a top-ten list of preferred architects that he wanted to see be engaged on this project. Studio Gang was chosen for the conceptual site plan. Genie Gang is the founder, and you can see there their mission. If you have not looked up Studio Gang online, it's worth, it's worth a Google search. They are a world-renowned architect that has designed award-winning buildings all over the world. They have offices in Chicago, California, in Paris. And they specialize in addressing projects that have a natural component, especially riverfront developments. Genie Gang is is a distinction of being, is designing the largest or the tallest building by a female architect in the world. They also just were awarded the design of the O'Hare International, two billion dollar O'Hare International project design. They are, again, the 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 word that we sort of received from Central Michigan University is they don't want simply a glass and brick building. They want to see something that is a statement piece for the state of Michigan. So next steps, where do we go from here, assuming that we get some approvals from this council tonight? We set up two committees that meet, I actually have three committees that meet every two weeks on these projects. The infrastructure side, which the city of Saginaw, the mayor, the city manager, Phil Carwatt, are invited to Saginaw Future, Spicer Engineering, AKT Peerless from the environmental side, Consumers Energy, MDOT, and Eagle. Those are primarily the permitting agencies that will need to be included. And then the Medical Diamond Steering Committee, which, of course, is comprised of the College of Medicine. Both presidents of Covenant and St. Mary's are part of that committee. Great Lakes Bay Health Centers, City of Saginaw, Saginaw County, the Department of Public Health, Community Mental Health, Saginaw Future, the Chamber, the Great Lakes Bay Regional Alliance, the Dow Chemical Company, and S V S U are all part of that steering committee. We sort of have three lanes, I suppose you would call it, to develop this project. One is is the real nuts and bolts of the infrastructure. What do we need to do next beyond the conceptual cost estimates that we've already done? We need site survey, NEPA compliance, geotechnical report, environmental report, wetland floodplain report, and we need to design the Consumers Energy project because that has the most lead time. From the master planning perspective, we need to engage with Studio Gang so that they can begin the process of of laying out the physical space. We are working with the engineers to delineate the buildable area and separate that from where the infrastructure will be, will be the routes of the infrastructure, engaging partners in the in the project. There are multiple partners, as you can probably imagine, associated with this project, and to do spatial planning around. How many square feet does each partner need, and then what does that space potentially look like? And then, of course, projects like this can't happen without some programming, fundraising being the major component of this. The, we'll need about a hundred million dollars for the physical buildings themselves, and then the partners at CMU are going to raise another hundred million dollars, and that's for programming within the college-endowed faculty members and scholarships and things of that nature to support the College of Medicine. And so that is my brief overview of this transformational project, and I can answer any questions that you might have regarding that.
Do we have any questions? Yes, Councilman?
You want us to approve the the ATK, AKT Peerless environmental study?
Yeah, that's a separate component. It NEPA compliance is something that the federal government requires when you're when you're doing, receiving federal.
I understand that. So shouldn't that money come out of the money we already, the city got to pay for this on top of the money that we gave already, or what?
It's coming from.
The three point three million.
The three point three million that will be reimbursed from that grant.
Okay.
From the appropriation that Congressman Kilby helped.
Okay, okay. And the, the money for the gang architects, that come from out of there too?
That comes from the state appropriation.
Okay, fine. Long as it ain't coming out of our pocket.
No out-of-pocket expenses, not so far. Not yet.
Clear prices.
Yes, Councilman?
Mr. Miller, I appreciate the updates and kind of the clearly outlined, because my biggest focus was what is the actual number? And so you provided us that actual number.
It's a little bit of a moving target.
So at least it gives me a reality of, we're looking at possibly two hundred million for the the completion of this whole program. The two questions that I have is because this money that we approved, it won't come out of our pocket. Is there a way or within these committees that there is an advocate for local contractors as they're putting together the plans that someone from these committees are advocating for local contractors?
Oh, for sure, yeah. I mean, and that's something that we we focus on at Saginaw Future, obviously. Now, Studio Gang is not from Saginaw, you know, that's the one contractor that is not. But they specialize in in really specific building projects, and that's that's why CMU chose them. But AKT Peerless will do the environmental, Spicer's doing the engineering, and when it gets down to actually doing the building, that'll be a bid process that that will be gone through, so.
And then my second question is with the, I was looking at the budget that you had laid out, and there are a lot of, before we even get to building, there's a lot of work that has to go in, which that was kind of my mind with the local contractors, with a lot of that work that's going to go take place there. But will we be able to, looking at your proposal and what you laid out, I saw that the timeline kind of goes past that twenty twenty-six. So is there a likelihood that our five million, we could put it towards something that's actually in your budget, let's say, the seawall for the playgrounds? Because we can actually, as a council, say that that benefits the city of Saginaw, it's benefiting our sky wall, and we're also improving our parks.
I mean, so, yeah, I mean, that's an interesting question, because we have had conversations regarding, meeting the ARPA requirements is is a must. I mean, we must meet both the obligation at the end of twenty twenty-four and then fully spent by twenty twenty-six. Yolanda and I and the city manager have had those conversations. In conversations with the development team, the the folks on the committee, they believe that we'll be able to construct, to commit and fully spend the the city's five million dollars for the Behavioral Health Clinic by twenty twenty-six. So, but that is in, you know, the manager, you know, we went through the planning process. Access to mental health is one of the key issues that not only is the ARPA dollar seeking to address, it's also a big focus of the College of Medicine. And so we think that's an important. And so, we think that's an important component of the project, and certainly if council decided they wanted to reallocate those, I don't believe we'll have an issue meeting the obligations, though.
I think, so with the way the allocation is, there's a number of different things you could spend it on, and so we have $5 million of ours in ARPA and $5 million for the county. With the county, we did work out a budget, so they're putting together their subrecipient contract for us, because we're going to be the grantee, so that'll come back probably the next meeting, but a lot of that stuff is planning, building, footings, pilings, things like that, the upfront costs that you have. But there is, and I had mentioned, so most of the stuff we're talking about primarily is putting the infrastructure together, but one of the aspects of the entire project that is really interesting to see, and Tom had the list of the people who are attending, but for the education part, there are a lot of local partners in there. Delta is working with them, SVSU and CMU all working together, because obviously SVSU has a nursing program, Delta has the allied health, and CMU has a medical school, so I think it'll create a lot of educational opportunities. And then, from the behavioral health aspect, I think we talked about it before, we don't do that. So, we're providing this funding through ARPA, so someone else can have a building or create a program, and in the group, I'm not sure if they're all on the list, but CMU is working with Great Lakes Bay Health, the health department, and I think.
Community mental health.
Community mental health, and another private individual who came to council to talk about behavioral health. So, it's a lot of teams working together to try to make various aspects of this project move forward.
Any other questions? Yes.
Just more of a comment. Thank you for all this information tonight, Tom. It's, I'm wondering myself too, so it's good to see the timeline, because when we're talking about this in the public, we're trying to give them an idea, like when the shovels are going to go in the ground and things are going to be created and built. What goes in my mind when I hear this tonight is the opportunities for the city of Saginaw going forward, I mean, when this is done or being built. Seeing the plan right now, you're looking three, four, five years out, for anybody that wants to go to school, MI Reconnect, go to Delta College downtown, these jobs are coming to the city of Saginaw. There's also going to be a huge demand for housing, so you hear that a lot, when we talk about housing and money for housing, well, you need developers for housing. So, everything that we're doing right now in the city, and I've been here for 20 years, this is huge. It's the biggest thing I've seen for Saginaw. And I, previous city of Bay City, I watched it happen through the 80s through the 90s, and then in 2000, I moved here. So, really, my comment is for the city, because we hear a lot on social media, it's whatever you want to make of it. I mean, the opportunities are coming here now, whether it's housing, affordable housing, that's a huge range of what is affordable. But prepare. I mean, this gives you opportunity to prepare, we've got the timelines, we, as a council, can talk about it in the city so that they can make those decisions and get things going.
Yeah, and there were a few bullet points from the Trip-Umbok study. I mean, they're, that's what they do every day is, you know, estimate the economic impact from the, from College of Medicine specifically, and I took a few of those bullet points out because they really had some pretty aggressive, I guess you would say, leveraging points in terms of the amount of jobs that could be spun off as relates to this, and then the implications for additional investment, which we believe will happen when you have an anchor project like this. You're going to have, hopefully, hotels. Certainly, we're working on two residential projects right now that would be complementary to this, retail. There's a lot of additional jobs and investment that will, but, you know, you want to, I think, be conservative on your estimates, but as you said, I think it now is a good time to prepare, and I think it will help to give confidence to people that are looking to invest. When you see a $100 million project and 1,000 jobs, it can give some confidence that there's a market there to help support some additional investment.
Right, and thanks to CMU for bringing their medical college here. That's huge. I mean, they're actually coming from Mount Pleasant to the city of Saginaw to train all their doctors. Again, that'll create a demand for housing for the physicians, because I know there are some, that study here now that live in the Bancroft and Eddy downtown. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I had one, real quick.
Yes, councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Are we working with the Economic Development Administration with this as well, or is that...
We did apply for an EDA grant, which we were unsuccessful in securing. It was, I think, it was maybe poor timing in the fact that we couldn't announce the headliner of the project because there were negotiations over moving the project forward. So, we are looking for, we have a good relationship with our regional EDA rep, who's actually from West Branch, Michigan, but they work out of the Chicago office. But certainly, federal grants are difficult to secure because they're ultra-competitive, but we are exploring other funding opportunities, because we will need additional funds for sure.
Okay. Any way that we can help, that'd be great. And then, last, with the $100 million for private investors, could there be any elaboration on that, or is it just private?
Yeah, I mean, so, the $100 million is actually the College of Medicine, so Central Michigan's College of Medicine does not receive any state funding. So, most universities, you know, go through the appropriations process. In order to get the College of Medicine started and to move it forward, they didn't go through that process, and so they're privately funded. And so, those funds will need to be raised to, they can't go to the state appropriations and ask for $100 million for a new building, so they're going to have to raise that ourselves.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and I wanted to provide clarifications on why I asked that question earlier. It was just because I was thinking about the, our councilman, Astash, talked about housing, and I was thinking about how do we make sure that even in these housing projects, that they are in the city of Saginaw? And so, that was really my mind about some of the questions. This is going to be a major project, and also with us having the $5 million, I didn't want us to have to just try and start spending money, at least with our $5 million, we can say, hey, it's shovel-ready, though. So, I was thinking about those things there. And then also, with the two committees, we do have city of Saginaw representatives. Would it be possible, if not during the council, the committee updates, to have a report? Because you said you all meet every two weeks or three weeks?
Yeah, depending on how much activity there, but yeah, we meet very regularly.
When we have those meetings, if we, as council, can either get an update by email or during our council meeting, just so we can, I'm thankful for this presentation today because we got emails and everything, all those things, now we're able to just say, here's all the information, and we can go from there, so thank you for this presentation today.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think there was a couple of, depositing the $30 million receiving, that's a huge step for us. The resolution by the Board of Trustees is huge. A lot of the infrastructure meetings, as Phil can stand up here and bore you for two hours on what size water main we're going to put in, a lot of the, that's not a very fun committee, it's pretty mundane, but some of the, the other side, the sort of the clinical, I guess you would say, side, I think there would be some interesting things, collaborations, what the space is going to look like, so I think those might be interesting for, when we get to that point, for sure.
Thank you, thank you.
Just a comment. Just a comment, yeah. It kind of goes along with what Councilman Copeland was just talking about, with the housing, and the Cathedral District that sits right next door. So, we, at the last council meeting that I was at, there was an approval for the firm and the money to do our zoning study. So, for the folks that are watching too, that creates new opportunities. So, for the Cathedral District and then maybe in the Northeast Side, we're looking at mixed-use neighborhoods. So, what does that mean? That means neighborhoods are small, small commercial again, but also ADUs, adaptive dwelling units, maybe some row housing. So, these are all things that we're going to be looking at, at the Planning Commission level, as we start to work the master plan and rezone the city. So, again, councilman, that could be more opportunity. We'll see how this all fares out. We never, you never know once you start, yeah. Once the train leaves the station, it's just gone.
On last Monday, let me just throw this in, on last Monday, me and the city manager, we met with Christian McDonald Ribbit. There is money coming down the pipeline for housing, and we plan to go after it. So, I know I keep hearing people say, housing, housing, and I kept saying, be patient. The money's out there, we just got to make sure that we're on point, and we know that where we're going, again, another shovel-ready project. And so, I've been trying to prepare us for monies that's coming down the pipeline. If we're not shovel-ready, we gonna miss it. Am I right or wrong?
You're right.
Because we got laid out. We got laid out about not going after money, and we like, well, money. So, hopefully, there will be some funding coming to do some housing. Any other questions? Mr. Miller?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom, and that concludes the management update.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Any questions for the manager?
Any question for the city manager? Madam Clerk?
Our next item is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available on, at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV, Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exception.
It's been moved in second.
Do we have any exceptions? That's a good one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
We are now at board commission and committee reports.
Do we have any board or commission reports? Madam Clerk?
We are at appointment of board and commission or committee members.
I need a motion to approve 1 through 6, allowing room for exceptions.
It's been moved in support.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
We are at ordinance introduction. We have one to introduce. It's to amend the official city map to vacate the northerly portion of North Charles Street, lying south of the south line of White Street, extending south approximately 106.84 feet.
I need a motion to introduce.
It's been moved in second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This ordinance will be laid over under the charter provision. Madam Clerk?
We are at ordinance adoption. We have one. It's to amend the official city map to rezone lots 1 through 7, Saginaw Heights, city of Saginaw, from R01, restricted office, to B1, local business district.
I need a motion to adopt.
It's been moved in support.
It's been moved in support. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
That takes us to miscellaneous business.
This brings us to this. How was I going to say it? We need to go into closed session, but before we go into closed session, is there any motion that we need to have adopted or announced now before closed session? I need a motion to go into closed session.
It's been moved in support.
Roll call, please.
That was Mayor Protem and Councilmember Flores. Councilmember Sylvia is absent.
Merry Christmas.
Yep, Merry Christmas.
Wednesday, all of you are invited to the soup kitchen.
I'm going to try and make it.
That's the menu.
Right. Turkey and ham.
Hey, thanks for your work, too. Everybody, especially the volunteers.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is roll call.
Mayor Protem, or Councilmember Vival, excuse me.
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor Protem Bent.
Yes.
Councilmember Astash.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
I'm still here.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores. Councilmember Copeland.
Yes.
And Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We have eight yes, one absent. You are in closed session at 7:55.